Meeting to order. Roll call. McCarrigan, here. Green.
Here.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Scanlon.
Here.
Lurma.
Here.
Here.
Join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the liberty of our which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and the free and just as for all. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. It's up on the wall. Four, notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda plus in twenty-four hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. Are there any changes?
No changes, your honor.
Five, citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law. No matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency actions? Okay, six, closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Seven, Scottswood Youth Council. Oh, Youth Council. Eight, public comments. The purpose of this agenda item is to allow for public comments of items for potential discussion at a future council meeting. Comments read to the council are for information only. A, the council will not take any action on the item except for referring it to staff to address replacement on a future council agenda. This comment period will be limited to three minutes.
Thank you again. I'm here for the third time about saying that you traffic speeding excessive noise on Broadway Friday and Saturday nights. And I know there was some information that was shared briefly with me tonight that the study has been completed. The study showed an average speed of thirty-four miles per hour. That's a, that's a twenty-four hour time period over three weeks. The study needs to reflect what happens on Friday and Saturday nights, and it does not. I guarantee you, the speed limit is not thirty-four miles an hour. It's excessive. It's excessive. So if the traffic study is done, what it amounts to is you're going to say thirty-four miles an hour. There's nothing you can do, nothing you should do. I'm here to tell you, you better come down and witness it yourself. When there's a problem, it's got to be addressed. It's got to be addressed. You cannot roll your eyes at me. You cannot dismiss it. My friend has called at least a dozen times again in the last two weeks. The neighbors have also. You cannot ignore, this is a serious issue. It is your responsibility to provide the citizenry of Scottsbluff the environment of safety. Thank you.
Okay. Nine, consent calendars. Sorry. Okay.
I just wanted to introduce to the council our two University of Nebraska Rural Fellows interns this evening, Lauren and Esther. Lauren is from University of Nebraska Kearney, and she will be a sophomore. And Esther will be a senior at UNO. So they're helping us gather information from businesses in our bleeding district this summer. And they're going to be working in Gearing as well. So we're sharing them with the city of Gearing. So far, art's been great. For me, I hope for many.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Well, I'm.
Nine, consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Green, second by Lurma. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Caldwell.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Lurma.
Yes.
McCarrigan. Yes. Ten, petitions, communications, and public input. A, mayor to read the proclamation naming June as National Safety Month. National Safety Month, June two thousand twenty-two. Whereas, the rate of unintentional injuries and deaths in the United States remain at unacceptable levels. Whereas, addressing musculoskeletal disorders, educating on impairment, providing employers with tools to prevent injuries, and mitigating falls remain critical to preventing injuries and deaths in the United States. Whereas, the cost of unintentional injuries to workers and their employers exceeds one one thousand five hundred, or one one hundred and fifty-eight point four billion each year and causes great suffering among individuals and their families. Whereas, Nebraska residents and all Americans deserve to live in communities that promote safe and healthy living. Whereas, preventing unintentional injuries and deaths requires the cooperation of all levels of government, employers, and the general public. Whereas, the National Safety Council founded in nineteen thirteen was congressionally chartered in nineteen fifty-three to lead this nation in injury prevention through safety and health information, education, training, and advocacy in the United States. Whereas, the Nebraska chapter of the National Safety Council and National Safety Council work to promote policies, practices, and procedures leading to increased safety, protection, and health in business and industry in schools and colleges, on roads and highways, and in homes and communities. Whereas, the Nebraska chapter of the National Safety Council and National Safety Council in two thousand twenty-two will provide this nation with a month-long public education campaign. Whereas, the summer season is a time of increased rates of unintentional injuries and deaths, it is an appropriate time to focus attention on injury risks and prevention. Therefore, Mayor Jeanne McCarrigan of Scottsbluff, Nebraska does hereby proclaim Scottsbluff, Nebraska's support of National Safety Month in June two thousand twenty-two and strongly urges the citizens and businesses of Scottsbluff, Nebraska to observe National Safety Month by practicing safe and healthy behaviors in all aspects of their lives. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Scottsbluff, of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, to be affixed at Scottsbluff City Hall this sixth day of June, the year of two thousand and twenty-two. Okay, B, council to discuss and consider action on six special designated liquor licenses for P R E S Inc., D B A Rosito's Restaurant to serve distilled spirits at the Bands on Broadway Summer Event at the Eighteenth Street Plaza on June twenty-third, thirtieth, July seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth from five to ten P M.
Rosemary.
Rosie.
Mayor.
Mayor.
I need to abstain from voting because of the conflict of interest.
Okay.
I move to accept that.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Green, second by Scanlon. Call the roll, please. Green.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan. Yes. Caldwell.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Can I serve margaritas for the remainder of the Bands on Broadway? So I'm not going to be able to. I didn't get one application in on time. So I guess I'll start on the twenty-third.
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 Okay.
And this will be your second year doing this?
Yes.
You did this last year, and you guys are doing a wristband?
Yeah, that's what we're doing, a wristband. And then of course we check at the time of purchase. The IDs.
Do we have any questions? Have we had any issues?
We haven't had any issues. It does, Cinco de Mayo made sure that we had officers on scene, and we'll do the same for Bands on Broadway. We're trying to staff it with on-duty staff, but if we need to, we'll put some officers on overtime.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, I second it.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Green. Any other questions? Call the roll, please. Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan. Yes. Caldwell.
Yes.
Green.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Eleven, council to discuss and consider action on awarding the bid for the purchase, removal, and relocation of the railroad caboose located at Highway twenty-six and East Twenty-seventh Street to Anthony Sinks for three thousand one hundred dollars.
I don't know if Anthony's in the audience. Yeah. But congratulations, Anthony.
Hot corn is in my kids.
Do you plan on moving it to your personal property or?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go on the nine mile.
Okay.
Do you work for R and C?
Yep.
Huh?
Yep.
Starting to make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. We had two other bids, but Anthony was certainly the highest.
Yeah, perfect.
Awesome.
And you want, do you want the bill of sales just in Anthony Sinks? Or do you have a, um, property there?
Yeah, I'll check.
Yeah, probably just in my name.
Okay.
Will they add that to my personal property, or do I pay tax on it?
Uh, no, 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 that's accounting. I doubt it's going to affect.
Okay. I was curious about that.
I would be surprised.
Yeah, all right.
Sounds good. But we'll do a bill of sale. We'll be ready to do it. And we're going to, you can flash that down there. But, yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
I know this is for the removal and things. What? Beyond that, is our plan? Are we going to do cleanup of the area or re?
You know, and this was the, this came through the park committee. So I think they want to just fix up that area. They were, the caboose wasn't being used, and they recognized that. So I think they want to plant some grass. There's been talk about possibly a picnic table with an awing there. But I don't know if there's anything definite right now, so.
I just, what are the expectations of the land after it was removed? Was it going to, was it going to need to be beautified or just put sawdust on it and all good?
I think there will at least be some grass there.
All right. Twelve, council to consider and take action on the third reading of the ordinance for the rezone of lots one, two, and three of the Big Dog Meadows subdivision from agriculture to R one A, single-family, medium-density. I'm sorry, do we need to take, do a motion on that?
You need to take action.
Oh. We just went ahead and gave it to him. We're so excited to have you. We've been waiting.
I'll move to approve item eleven A.
I second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Caldwell. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Lurma.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
McCarrigan. Yes. Green.
Yes, yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, once again. Do you want me to read it for you, Kim? Okay. Okay, can I just read the ordinance? An ordinance dealing with zoning, amending section twenty-five dash one dash four by updating the official zoning district map to show that lots one, two, and three, Block One, Big Dog Meadows subdivision, situated in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section fifteen, Township twenty-two North, range fifty-five west of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, currently zoned as agricultural A, will now be included in single-family district R dash one A, repealing prior section twenty-five dash one dash four, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form. Okay.
I move to approve the ordinance.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Scanlon. Any other questions, comments?
Would we be able to annex this property now? Because now it will no longer be farmland, is that?
Well, that has nothing to do with us annexing it. It could remain farm property, and we could annex it. But we're able to annex it now.
Call the roll, please. McCarrigan. Yes. Green.
Yes, yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Lurma.
Yes.
Okay. Council to discuss and consider a resolution to place the additional one-half cent sales tax on the November general election ballot and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Your other counsel? I'm going to give it a shot.
Do it, do it. That's probably, probably here.
So. The, you guys have done this once before. You did this in December of last year. And after some work with the bond counsel, Liz and Kent, and the bond counsel determined that the resolution needed some modification, that the wording was really too specific. And the concern was, what do we do with the excess receipts if there are any? Because the language was so specific about it being just for the aquatic center, so.
Okay.
So the difference in this one was, on the page one, there was a D that states that you did this once, and now you're modifying the resolution. And then B, on page two, it's reworded, and it says revenues from the increased sales and use tax are to be used for such purposes as provided in section seventy-seven, twenty-seven, one forty-two of the Nebraska statutes and shall include a municipal aquatic center. The old one said for the following public infrastructure project as allowed by subsection seventy-seven of the Nebraska statutes, municipal aquatic center. So it was very specific. So if we collected more revenues than the aquatic center spent, it didn't allow for what we could do with that money. And then the other sentence that was added was on C on page two, none of the revenue from such increased sales and use tax will be transferred to the Scottsbluff Aquatic Center Agency, but shall be used by the city for such purposes which include municipal aquatic centers. So that language allows for us to spend the excess receipts.
And those excess can only be used for that capital improvements, correct?
Yes, still for projects.
Okay.
In that statute.
Okay.
And then this tax terminates either before ten years or after we hit the amount we're going for, as far as the aquatic center is concerned, correct? So it's not just a tax perpetuity?
Yep, ten years or when the aquatic center is paid for.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the air conditioner is on. Were you talking about when the sun sets? That's what you're getting at?
Yeah.
In ten years. When the bonds are paid in. Any other questions, comments?
I know there's been some thought in the community, depending on who you talk to, that we may or may not need an aquatic center, depending on if someone is interested in an aquatic center personally or not. But I think as a council, we've all discussed how important it is to our community. And then those town hall meetings that have been going on have been addressing concerns that community members have. And there are those that can answer those questions also. This isn't something that is still, this isn't something that's completely set in stone in terms of what it's going to look like, how it's going to run. And so community input is still being sought.
Okay.
I move to approve the resolution.
Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion by Caldwell, second by Scanlon. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Caldwell.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Green.
Yes, yes.
Lurma.
Yes.
McCarrigan. Yes. All right, thirteen, council to discuss and consider action on the amendment to Economic Development Assistance Agreement with Original Equipment Company and authorize the Economic Development Program Administrator to sign the agreement.
Right, good evening. And this is a agreement that was approved by the council on September twenty-first of two thousand twenty. And so job credits began January of two thousand twenty-one through December two thousand twenty-one. And then they had a payment due later than forty-five days after that. They, the original company came to us, and with the worker shortage that's going on right now, they were unable to fulfill the federal job credits that they, that they anticipated and came to the L B A forty application review committee for a modification to their agreement. So you have the information in front of you. They have earned seventy-one thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-six cents in job credits. So the modification would be for the six hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-four cents. The original job creation was thirty-one jobs with salaries ranging from twenty-four thousand to sixty thousand for those jobs. But again, they've been unable to find workers to fill those positions. So they've asked for this modification. It was approved unanimously by the L B A forty application committee. Ostenol is here, in case you have any questions.
Okay. And that, the modification is just extending those credits, correct?
Basically, instead of having, having the payments due on an annual basis, there'll be a final balloon payment due at the end of the, now nine years. But they'll still report their job credits annually.
Do you have any questions? Questions? Questions, comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Um, sorry.
Oh.
As far as I know, the job shortage is tight. But what kind of things are you doing now to try to recruit people to the workforce?
Well, we're reaching out to just a larger span of geographical area. Obviously, we're reaching out. We're partnering with Lyotek now, Seattle Bicycles, we have a partnership with. And then we have an ongoing campaigns. I mean, as far as that goes, it's nationwide for all our locations. But I guess the kind of moral of the story here, start kind of heading up there, is I'm not after, I'm not after you guys for giving credits by any stretch. But this was year one, we came out, L B A forty was year one, we came out of that building, and just that new facility just opened. So we got guys in the door, and then obviously COVID hit back directly before we signed L B A forty funds. So I'm just, if anything, kicking the can down the road without lack of better words. But I think we'll make up for it in further years. So rather than making an annual payment for jobs that we create that year, I'll just kick those jobs into the next year in open half. I mean, at the end of nine years, I can guarantee we are ahead of what we're after. But let us get to the end, and we'll get checked, and check. I want to just move it, amortize the jobs we create every year and then move what we didn't create into the next year. So for year one, maybe we did seven. Year two, I only got five, so year two we need nine, and so on and so forth. I might get a fourth long, but I promise that. When we came out, COVID hit us day one, which is obviously a nationwide shortage of labor right now. And then B, we're a fresh facility, so we're still getting our feet wet on the dynamics of how everything operates as well.
Thanks.
Any questions, comments? Okay.
There was some, there was some reading in there that was hard. We had to look at it. And there was some reading in there that deemed those jobs created, those jobs that we create, particular to that facility. But that, I think we changed it a little bit since then. Because if I grow, if we grow the truck shop to the adequate size we're after, then we have to grow, we have to grow our clerical staff, we have to see fit. Freight department has to grow, that department has to grow. Everything has to go with it. And all those jobs are housed in different facilities. So we can't deem those jobs that we get credits for just that facility, because everything has to go in, and connect with each other.
Because of the, because of the initial business, though? The main business that you're starting, right?
Exactly. So if I had five, as they say, I, we, we had five in the truck shop. And then, you know, we have to know that the clerical staff, you have to be improved. The freight department, we're going to be shipping more stuff out. So we're going to have a larger freight department. And we manufacture all of our stuff in half a freight vertical. So our manufacturing team, our fabrication team's going to have to go with that. So if we have five here, we'll have two or three over here. So they can't be just that facility.
Yep. How does that work? You get a job credit to create something for, I'm going to say drivers. And you say, I need so much credit to get ten drivers. But you only hire three, but you hire a maintenance worker instead. But you're kind of getting the money to do the drivers, not the maintenance people. That's just kind of like.
Well, we're not limited to.
It might misunderstand anybody saying, we're like, we're going to hire these people instead to get the credit.
We're only employee if we operate. So if they're hire three drivers, which requires to hire a mechanic or something, or clerical staff, that's a full-time equivalent employee. They should be credited with establishing that position within their company. It's not limited to like this truck driver or an mechanic.
It's not specific to job description, correct?
No.
Full-time equivalent.
Full-time employee that's working for this company.
So what did they have to modify, I guess is my question.
It was never, it was never job-specific. It was facilities or something in the literature. It never said, it never said, it just said that facility has to build by X number. But we have multiple facilities, and all of them have to go and connect with each other for that reasoning. But it never did, it never did indicate a specific career as part of the training, as clerical.
I misunderstood when you were looking over there, asking about, you know, modification.
Well, the language was in one D, two small i's, at least three. They felt it was a little too specific.
Yeah.
But that wasn't the intent, I mean, the intent of the committee when they opened up the money was.
Do we capture?
Yeah. Do you have, do you have a credit?
As we're out to do, yeah. Like I said, we'll meet our, we'll meet our goal at the end of nine years from today, or from the first year behind us now. But we'll meet, we'll meet the thirty, and if we don't, we'll pay what we owe.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thanks for explaining.
Thank you.
I move to approve the amended Economic Development Assistance Agreement.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead. I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Caldwell, second by Lurma. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Green.
Yes, yes.
Lurma.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan. Yes. Caldwell.
Yes.
All right, B, mayor and council to discuss and consider action to generate interest and solicit applicants for the city manager vacancy. So I requested that this be placed on the agenda. And basically, what we're thinking, I discussed it with Kevin, was placing, having Kami put out a job request or a request for a city manager and place that out. I was thinking forty-five days, run it, or if there's thoughts besides that. But we wouldn't use the recruiting firm. We would just place it ourselves. So, and run it for forty-five days. That would give us time to get to look at all of the applications, narrow it down, do our interviews, and so. And so, go from there. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Do you know where Kami will be posting, like, you know, LinkedIn, et cetera, kind of thing, or do you know?
Yeah, I know she uses all the social media. We were thinking the leak, we could put it in there. Um, so it'll be out on the webpage and everything, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I think forty-five days is sufficient, longer just draws it all out longer.
Yeah. So we don't want, because if you put it out there too long, then people move on to a different position and so we may lose that interest, so. Any questions, comments?
I agree with the plan.
Do we need to make a motion? Okay.
In that case, I move to approve the plan for generating interest in a city manager vacancy.
And I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Scanlon, second by Lurma. Any other questions, comments?
In the motion, do we need to state a date of how long it's open or just send it to staff to initiate?
I don't think in a minute, but I'm sure it'll be, the motion will be to run as we do with any openings and get it in the trade year rules for a forty-five days.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, call the roll please. Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Lurma.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Green.
Yes, yes.
All right, fourteen, council reports, informational only. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Do we have any updates?
No updates.
No. Kevin, Dave, and I, we did three town halls. That's been interesting, so it was good. So.
Thank you for doing this.
Thanks for film, um, filming them online too.
Yeah, we actually had questions and comments come in online, so there was people watching.
Yeah, I think, I think the meetings run fairly well. Um, there'll be kind of a lull in activity. Um, and then towards the end of summer, beginning of fall, start to have civic organizations and the, uh, committee that's doing this is citizen-led and they're doing a really good job, so.
Awesome.
Went to twenty-three clubs, opening day. It was silly, really came along last couple of weeks, it just really looks nice. I know there's still a little here and there to go, but waiting for the playground.
We're broken, we're broken ground now, uh, today, actually.
Awesome, well, that's good. And Mark's crew, you got purple lights on the bridge for Elder Abuse Month. Thank you.
The request you've come.
I know, I get them all the time. Okay.
That's cool, thanks.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Call the roll please. McCarrigan.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Lurma.
Yes.